January 21st. Can we have a roll call, Tabitha?
Maryam?
Here.
Commissioner Patrick?
Here.
Commissioner Skirpner?
Here.
Commissioner Lutman?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
And for indications tonight, we've got Pastor Mark Summerville with Family Worships there.
Show and pray. Our gracious Father, tonight we come with thankful hearts, thanking you tonight for the men and women that serve this spine city. Lord, we thank you that they're dedicated to the betterment of this city. We pray your protection upon them and upon their families. We thank you for the wisdom that you have given our city council as they lead this community. We pray your richest blessing upon this meeting tonight, and bless all that partake, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mark. Ode, everyone, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we don't have any proclamations or recognitions, so we're going to move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM at the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only and no action will be taken. And then we have two personal appearances tonight. First, we'll ask the representatives from the Kansas One Shot Turkey Hunt to come up.
Hi, I have a few handouts for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Danica Dixon. I am the new managing director for the Kansas One Shot Turkey Hunt, and I wanted to come in today and share with you a little information about our hunt last year and what we're looking forward to this year. And I would like to thank my board members for coming tonight. Last year, the direct economic impact of the hunt was $650,000. Approximately $20,000 of that was spent on hotels in El Dorado. We hosted 37 hunters, 37 guides, and approximately 100 landowners were involved in last year's hunt. Total, for all of the events throughout the three-day hunt, we had 350 people attend. 250 of those folks were from outside of El Dorado. They also raised $13,000 last year for the Mark McCollum Scholarship. This year, we're looking forward to some special attendees. We've already begun receiving registrations. Our current governor lieutenant, our current Lieutenant Governor David Tolan and the current Attorney General Chris Kobach will be in attendance as hunters this year. Former Governor Mike Hayden will be in attendance. Our Wednesday evening emcee will be Miss Rodeo Kansas 2025 Charity Pulliam. And our emcee for our Friday night banquet is going to be the local news personality, Michael Schwenke. Another exciting hunter that we're going to have this year is our very own City Manager, David Dilner, participating. And then we're also going to welcome American hero Mark Nutsch. For those of you who are not familiar with Mark Nutsch, he's known as Horse Soldier. He was the leading commander of a Green Beret unit, the first unit into Afghanistan after 9/11. He was instrumental in us getting the upper hand in the war on terrorism. And they had to use unique tactics going into that situation because it was uncharted territory, and they ended up riding horseback, and that's why he's known as the Horse Soldier. You might recognize him from two movies that were made after him. It was Twelve Strong and Legion of Brothers that were based on his unit and role in fighting terrorism. For 2025, I have given you the newsletter that I wrote in November just so that you can have a better understanding of the complexities and things that go into preparing for the hunt, the license, that kind of thing. We are looking for community involvement and community support this year. I've also included the itinerary for the three days of events, and we would like to invite any community members who are interested to join us at the 4H Building on Thursday or Friday afternoon for the community luncheon. It's a chance to meet some of these local and national celebrities that will be in our area. And we're also selling tickets to the banquet, so if you're interested in coming and listening to Mark Nutsch's story, you can always purchase a banquet ticket. And as always, we are looking for volunteers to help with registration, lunch, cleanup, that kind of thing. Does anyone have questions for me?
Sounds exciting.
It is. I'm excited. This is my first year. I actually worked at Butler Community College for seven years, a long time ago, coordinating service projects, and I sent a group of students out to help with this event. But this will be my first actual year to get to attend, so I'm very excited as well.
Appreciate you, and we're looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it a lot, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. For personal appearances tonight, our second one is El Dorado Inc.
All right, well, thank you all for taking the time to hear an update on El Dorado Inc. from 2024. So this is kind of a review. You all know El Dorado Inc.'s initiatives, but we basically exist to further economic development through these different initiatives on the screen. Number one is to recruit industrial development prospects that align with our strengths and assets, such as high-volume water users and people needing large tracts of land. We help facilitate commercial development wherever applicable throughout El Dorado. We support the development of diverse housing options within El Dorado. We provide general support to the local business community by assisting with any business development and expansion efforts. And then we implement a strategic marketing plan to help recruit those targeted industries and to market El Dorado to regional and national real estate market. So for 2024, there were commercial permits issued for a total of about 6.2 million, which is up $1.7 million from 2023. The top taxable projects that started last year were the BG Products Kitting Facility addition that they did that was about $4.5 million. And then the upgrades that El Dorado Plaza did to bring in the Beal store. I listed out a couple other of the smaller commercial builds that were new, and then I'm sure you saw some of the remodels Freddie's was doing on their exterior, and Walmart did some interior updates. A 2023 carryover project, which is actually probably from the year before that, is the 142 North Main project. I think they got their elevator installed now, and they are working on second-floor renovations and grants that go with that. When it comes to housing, there were 26 new residential housing starts last year. Four of those were duplexes, so actually 30 new front doors. That's about $4.4 million in housing permits that were issued, and the average home value was about $170,000. To relate that to previous years, 2023, there were 30 home starts, and 2022, there were 32 home starts. So that's a total of 88 home starts in the last three years, which is awesome. And if you're wondering where those residential builds happened, kind of all over. I pointed out the two areas where the duplexes were built, some on 10th and some on Taylor. And then the rest are really kind of all over, some to the north, some to the south. Organization involvement throughout 2024. I continued my involvement with a lot of these organizations, as well as I started to get involved with others. As you can see, I'm kind of involved in anything that relates to economic development from local, regional, state, all the way up to national levels. So it's always kind of fun to look back at the numbers. So El Dorado had a successful year with housing starts, commercial permit activity, and the local project activity. Inc. held over 135-plus meetings across all different factions of things that we do. I attended five different conferences across the U.S., mainly to reach those site selectors, but some were direct for businesses. I responded to 18 different requests for proposals and assisted with over 30 different local project happenings. And then we also hosted four different site visits. That was with two different companies stemming from the RFP responses. So the RFP responses, which I call the pipeline, this kind of sums up the activity from last year. There were 18 that I responded to. We still have 54 active in the pipeline from probably about when I started, 2021. So these categories don't necessarily equal the total amount of projects because each project doesn't always give you the number for everything on that list. So it's a lot more diverse than I've seen in previous years. I've seen quite a few agricultural equipment manufacturer projects come through, as well as we've had a couple of aviation projects looking at El Dorado and a couple recently in pharmaceuticals. I've also seen a big increase in searches for existing buildings as the cost of construction has continued to rise. So I have submitted the Pioneer Balloon and Automation Buildings on multiple projects when it fit the specs, and we've had some site visits on those properties. The project list still includes quite a few mega projects, which means that they have a capital expenditure of over $1 billion, and there was four of those last year. Electricity continues to be a heavily demanded resource. We've seen a lot of projects needing 50, 100, some more than that, that we can't necessarily respond on, but we had six asking for over 50 megawatts, or is it 10 megawatts? Anyway, Evergy is investing into two new natural gas power plants, which you may have heard about. Those will be in the South Central Kansas region, which is awesome for the state, and we hope it adds more to the pipeline for us to access. One of those is in Reno County by Hutch, and one's in Sumner County, and those will both add about 700 megawatts to the system. So they hope those will be online by 2030. And conversations continue with Evergy to try and make us more competitive on projects that require a lot of electricity. And of course, water is always a really important component to a project. And when a project needs more than about a million gallons a day, I'm the one that Department of Commerce is calling because they know we will have a reliable access to that water. Other things listed on here, for your knowledge, the rail needed. It's about half the time. They do want access to rail and the acreage difference. If you have any questions on this, you can follow up with me. So Develop El Dorado. We continue to target and try to recruit businesses proactively through our Develop El Dorado campaign, which goes hand-in-hand with our reactive responding to those RFPs. So in 2024, I got new lists from Department of Commerce and added about 5,000 more contacts to our list. And those are companies who, by some AI magic, tells us that they are looking to expand. So with that, we also tried out geo-fencing when I was in Washington, D.C. at a big conference. And over four days, we had over 3,500 visits to our website, so that was great. There's some more information on here about what they visited and things like that. For 2025, we are working with a new marketing firm you might know of, Stop Branding. They are a local company, and they're going to help us with strategic planning sessions monthly for our marketing. And we'll be focusing on specific industry messaging. So whether it's food processing, or it's EV battery, or all those different things, they will get a specific targeted message. We're also, they are going to help us with our business retention and expansion efforts here locally as well. I also will be attending conferences this year mainly with the Greater Witchstop Partnership because they are going to start coordinating, attending conferences, and setting up meetings with site selectors that are based out of those cities to kind of double-dip and get more use out of our time at conferences. And then Inc. is also looking at how we can partner with those who invest in Inc. to create a master plan of that industrial area that we work on. So 2025 is already going. These are just a couple of things that are happening in the first quarter that you'll hear more about when I come back in April. So this Develop El Dorado Marketing Phase Two with our new marketing team implementing that. And then also strategically planning those site selector visits with the conferences. Also partnering with GWP to bring brokers, commercial brokers from Kansas City to El Dorado to tour our sites. So when they have clients looking for certain things, they will be able to share our information. In February, I will be going up to Topeka for a legislative visit with all Kansas economic developers, where we get to visit with Lieutenant Governor and all of our representatives on priorities that economic developers would like them to focus on. And then continuing to work with some new potential company locations in the industrial park area that are local, regional-based projects, not from the RFPs. So I tried to not take more than 10 minutes. I think I made it.
Good job.
It's a lot to cover.
It is.
Any questions?
Lots of work.
You said there were 88 home starts, homes the last two years?
Three years.
Three years?
Yes.
And what assistance is it that El Dorado Inc. gives them?
So it depends. We have actually been working with the city more this year on figuring out how Inc.'s role with housing could shift. So it's basically housing incentives. If they're trying to apply for the MIH, we help coordinate that process with you all if they need it. And then other housing incentives, we helped with the RHID formation, the policy for that. And then I take phone calls from different developers who are interested in the area that just have questions on what land would be available for them to build on and things like that.
Now, do these developers know that you offer those services with the MHI and all those?
Yes, once I talk to them, yes. And you can send anybody my way.
I'm curious about the pipeline. So you're 72, right, between your active projects and the projects that you responded in? Do you have like a, do you follow up with a monthly, quarterly? What's your, what's your strategy to keep El Dorado on the forefront of these projects?
Sure. So the 18 is included in the 54. It's all active. But yes, so it depends where the lead come from, comes from. If it's Department of Commerce, I try to follow up with them about quarterly. Getting a response from site selectors can be difficult because they may have, on each project, you know, 300 sites across the U.S. And so when they've narrowed it down to 100, they're not necessarily letting that other 200 know that they didn't move forward. So it's difficult to narrow that down. But I work with GWP also. Once they've heard something on a project, yea or nay, is it moving forward? Then I update my database. So it's kind of a struggle, but.
Okay.
Well, you're going to meet with the legislature in February there in Topeka. Who's developing these examples you're going to be looking at? Is that you then, coordinator of effort between the two of you?
So it's, I'm going up with the Kansas Economic Development Alliance. So it's a group. I'm not exactly sure how many of us are in it, but it's all the economic developers from across the state. So we go up on one day. We have scheduled meetings with the Lieutenant Governor, different representatives, and we have a luncheon with all of them as well. So while I'm up there, I'm setting up visits with our representatives, carpenter in fact. So they make the agenda. I just have to show up and give the spiel, basically. Any other questions?
Do you all have anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction, the city may do so and call upon comments on personnel matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted because land use public hearings are held during a planning commission meeting. Is there anyone here for public comment? Okay, I'll move on to the consent agenda then. Tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of City Commission meeting minutes from December 16, 2024, approval of appropriation ordinance number 12-24 in the amount of $2,644,303.67. And also considering the approval of the slate of advisory board appointments that we discussed at the work session. Do I have a motion to approve or consider? I'm sorry, hang on. Before, before we approve the consent agenda, Tabitha mentioned before that there was a name added to the.
Lori Geoso for the application late last week for a couple of the advisory boards. We do have space on Experience El Dorado, so we've already talked to her about that. But she was also interested in the Sales Tax Advisory Board. Last year, you allowed anyone who pretty much wanted to serve on that board to serve. And so we didn't limit it to the seven last year. And so if you would like to do that again, she is interested in that board. She served on the committee that did the question on the ballot a couple of years ago.
And what was her name again?
Lori Geoso.
Oh, okay.
I actually need a representative for that, so Brett Brett was booked.
So Lori.
Perfect.
Would love to do it.
Okay, then all we need to do is remove Brett's name on. All right, so that's the, that's the change. And do I have a motion to approve that in the consent agenda?
So do you want to combine the two or just say motion?
Just motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries nothing in old business, remove on to new business agenda in number 10, consideration of ordinance of the City of El Dorado amending Title IV of the City of El Dorado Municipal Code relating to the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, question. We were reached out to by one of our local liquor stores. The city or the state of Kansas changed the alcohol and beverage control laws about a year ago, maybe two years now, and allowed for an extended Sunday sale. Previously, it was noon to 6, I think. And they have allowed cities to extend that from 9 to 8. And when we were looking at doing that, we realized that there were a couple others that have been updated since as well. And so we just wanted to make sure that our rules, you know, the state of Kansas, and so that's all they did. We're just making sure we match what they're doing. If you have specific questions, I can answer.
Motion. A move to approve an ordinance of the City of El Dorado amending Title IV of the City of El Dorado Municipal Code relating to the sale of alcoholic beverages.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 11. I was just going to say what it is, but you go ahead. It's, no, it's fine. My pet has 5%, left, so get her down.
Okay, the resolution before you all is to approve a wholesale water contract between City and Wholesale Water District Number Eight. The contract expired in 2023, so this will be a four-year extension of sorts with some amendments. So one of the things that we are doing is changing the measurements from gallons per year to gallons per day. The prior reason for that is because we treat water based on the day, not the year. And so this one, we're closely aligned with our system's ability to treat water and making sure that we're not selling more water than what we can actively treat in one day and get through our system. In addition to that, in looking at these wholesale water contracts, we also noted that there are several districts that the city contracted significantly, significant volumes above what they were projected to use over the next 10, even potentially 20 years. And so we are reducing some of those volume numbers to more closely aligned with what they actually use with some flexibility so that if they do exceed those numbers, there's an amount built into that 10% above what the peak averages is used by the district. And in addition to that, the contract does provide for provisions to amend the contract at any point in time if they need additional supply that's not included in their current contract. So the contract, while it is a four-year contract, can be amended to allow for additional amounts above the current volumes included in the contract. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
So if this expired in December of 2023, do you take a whole year to negotiate a new one?
No, I believe part of that was getting a new utilities director up to speed and then kind of having assessment of the agreements and kind of figuring out strategy, and then meeting with individual districts. So it can take a little bit of time to get to where we are at now.
Our motion.
I move to approve a resolution approving a wholesale water contract between the City of El Dorado, Kansas, a municipal corporation, and the Butler Wholesale Water District Eight.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Are there any further discussion or questions for staff? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I will say real briefly to your point, once the contract expired, in essence, nothing changed. We still build at the same rate and the same volumes. This just reduces its driving so that both parts have some assurance of things will happen in the next four years.
All right, so move on to discussion items. There's nothing on the agenda for discussion items. So this will move to City Commission Advisory Board updates. I'll start with you, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Main Street meets next week.
Perfect.
And I've got a Parks Rec meeting next week also.
Fantastic.
I'll be busy next week.
Unfortunately, I had to come up and couldn't attend the last 254 meeting, so I don't have anything.
Okay. Our board meets next week, and El Dorado Inc., she gave you a pretty good recap, so.
Got a great recap from El Dorado Inc.
I'll be busy week next week.
When is the EFT next week, if you have any?
Is that next week? No, it's.
It's the second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday?
Yes.
Perfect, so I'll have my updated meeting. I would try to follow my calendar line, that's nice, so I agree with that. So I don't have any updates. City managers report.
We have a few things going on. The Contra Great Santeras Sewer Project is underway on the south end of town. If you drive on the trafficway, you'll notice that there's some roads down there. Douglas Avenue is currently closed at the trafficway, so you can't go north onto Douglas. And then traffic is diverted slightly to the south. You'll notice the detour there. The contractor is currently boring the sewer main, and so that's the main work that's taking place. So you can still drive. There won't be any disruption of traffic as that is a part of that project. Central Avenue, we do have Main and Central open to traffic now. It's a four-way stop, as you probably have seen now. The contractor will resume boring the water main towards Denver pending wet weather. So that's what we're waiting on that. The Housing Task Force will actually meet tomorrow, and they're going to continue their discussion looking at property ownership of large tracts of land, particularly in growth areas to the north and to the southwest, and also begin discussing strategies for getting those properties opened up for development, as well as strategies for getting, facilitating residential development in general. The Aquatic Center RFP, we did get a response back from Garver, as you all know, and we were working with them on a scope of services. Their original scope was submitted to us a couple weeks ago at a cost of $235,000. Scott and his team were able to negotiate that down to $162,000. So we anticipate that that will be finalized here soon and brought to you all for approval in, on your first meeting in February so we can begin the planning phase of that project. KDOT, well, soon, well, they're not going to soon begin construction, but they're anticipating beginning construction of the 12th Street Bridge in the fall of 2025. That project will take a one-year build, so there will be a significant detour to get to the, around the lake, as well as to get to our recreational facilities for a year. The project also includes a design, a design that includes a sidewalk on the north side of the street. And so KDOT is anticipating that it could be a connection from the St. Mike's Path, that is adjacent drive, to connect up to that, which will then connect up to our recreation facility there at the.
So how far west would that go?
So the bridge, the bridge is just going to be constructed to accommodate the pedestrians. There won't be any additional work outside of the bridge unless the city proceeds with it.
Oh, okay. I thought the sidewalk was part of that, tied in with that project with the bridge, but it's not?
They just, they, they wanted, if you all recall, you passed a resolution while just advocating for it, the County Commission did as well. They took that information, and then they took some information we were able to collect from our transportation plan and said, yeah, okay, this makes sense to at least construct a bridge to accommodate pedestrians. So there'll be a nice, nice two-lane bridge with wider shoulders and then a 10-foot pedestrian walk protected walkway on the north side.
But what I'm curious about is how far then to the west on 12th Street are you planning on taking that walkway?
In your CIP, there's a project proposed where a path would be built from Jason Drive.
Which one is Jason?
That would be the.
West End for instance.
Oh, the west end, okay.
Yep.
The far west with a.
Yeah. The new one.
The new one. The new one.
From Jason Drive all the way to the Royal River Sports Complex.
So it wouldn't go up by us then?
It would go right along the north edge of 12th Avenue, along where the ball fields, out there underneath the dam. We also have the bidding of the water main replacement, which is at Central Haverhill. We had a water leak there for a number of years. It seems to, you have the perk laid up when it gets cold outside. So they'll be bidding that and that should be on the February 17th commission meeting for approval. The nice thing is that once we do that work, we will, in essence, abandon the water line that's under the street surface. And so that will create, it will actually remove the need for tearing up the intersection and it will also prevent the need for, yeah, will prevent the need for tearing up the intersection. So the way we're doing it is kind of going around the intersection to accommodate that because we know that that's obviously one of the most traveled intersections in town. Let's see. Folks on Facebook have been commenting about higher water and sewer bills. Just a couple points on that. They may be experiencing slightly higher volumes due to the installation of our new metering. Most of our meters in residential neighborhoods were between 10 to 15 years old. Some, of course, were newer than that. And some, of course, were even older than that. As I was talking to staff, some of the tickets recently were from 1986. So those meters, as they get older, they do measure less accurately. So you may see a bump in your volume, which is not necessarily a bump in your rates, but if you do measure more water through there because the meter is measuring more accurately, it's going to look like your water bill is higher. The water and sewer rates actually don't go to affect until the end of rebuilding. So whatever you see under billed now is going to be largely because of those higher volumes. We do encourage folks that if they do have questions about their water bill or they are seeing something that is kind of unexplainable, like a significant jump in your water sewer rates, to call City Hall because we can, we can kind of look up your history and kind of determine if it is an effective anomaly. And if it is, you could have a water leak and we'll kind of coach you through that and work with you on how to identify that. And then if you do get that fixed, there is a rebate that goes back against your water usage. Another thing that we will be implementing here very soon or rolling out very soon, as Tabitha pulls that up on the screen, is our water customer portal. So beginning February 1st, customers will be able to create accounts and they will be able to log in and see their real-time usage with their water bill and be able to track that much like you can your electric bill as well. So we'll have more information coming out about that soon, but that will be coming out here in the next couple of weeks. And I believe you actually pulled up the sewer averaging.
Yeah, this has been updated. We did find that in one of our updates to the website somewhere, this page went away. And so we have fixed it and it is back. And so if you, if residents have questions on how we do sewer averaging, they can go to the utility services and, and find how we do that there. Once we release the portal, it will also be made right here as well.
So people may have a question as to why we do sewer averaging, why don't they bill me for actual usage? It seems like maybe the city's billing me for something I'm not using. And the answer is, is that a lot of people may irrigate their yards or fill pools and a lot of that water, when it's eventually released, doesn't go into the sanitary sewer system. It goes into the storm system. And the reason that's important distinction is because the storm system, there's no treatment process. The storm system ends up in the river and it goes downstream. The sanitary sewer discharge is however going to a plant and there's cost, treat all water that goes through the plant, whether it's pool of water that's actually just treated water or wastewater. So anything that goes through the plant, there's operational costs, electricity, et cetera, so on and so forth. So your winter average only accounts for the water that you use in the winter months because the idea is you're not filling a pool, you're not doing a lot of exterior watering that's going to hit the storm system. So your winter averages is going to reflect your, your actual interior usage, like your kitchen, your toilets, your showers, those kind of usages. If we were to bill, bill residential accounts based on their actual usage, a lot of residents would actually pay more for water that they're actually, for sewer, that they're not actually sending down to the sewer plant. Now their water, your water bill will be higher based on your actual usage, but sanitary sewer bills will only reflect what's going down the drain and going to the plant. And that's why we do that.
Makes sense.
So if you have any questions about that. The last thing that I have on my list is tomorrow, Commissioner Richmond and I and Sam Cooper, our intern, will be going to Topeka for Local Government Day where we too will be meeting with Senator Bagg and Representative Carpenter to advocate for things that will benefit our community. So we'll be back tomorrow and be late. So that's what we have to do.
Appreciate it. Yeah, if there's nothing else, I consider a motion to adjourn.
So move to--
Second.
Motion is second. All those that dare say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.